And I'd also like to recognize that today is Tina Boons. Where is she? She's usually my line side.
I appreciate it.
This is her last meeting with us as the principal for Weatherby. And my son is devastated. And on the way to soccer camp this morning, I had to listen to him and Mabel argue about who's best, Mrs. Briggs or Mrs. Boon. And so I want to say you're so loved by many, not only students, but parents and community members. What you've done to carry on the legacy that Regan Health established before you joined up the team has been phenomenal and has continued to grow and excel in Weatherby and it's reflected in what students we have. And so I just want to thank you so much for your time. And hopefully, I mean, we're losing you to Glenburn and it's their gain and I hope you'll consider some point coming back to us, realizing maybe the grass is greener over here. But I wish you the very best and on behalf of the board, we want to sincerely thank you. So. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Under resignations, I do have three to report publicly this evening and per the board's desire and wish, you'll see that the letters are enclosed and you know the reason why the people are leaving us. Julia LeRidge, you can see the nomination, also Lisa Bowyer and Crystal Davidson, the three people that have chosen to move on to other opportunities. Under nominations, we do have a number this evening, so if you take a look at the agenda notes that were mailed to you Friday, we'll take those first and we'll give three administrators first. And the first one is the George B. Weatherby Elementary School Principalship and that's Jennifer Seer. For the benefit of the audience, Jennifer is currently the principal of the Leonard Middle School, RSU 34, which is Old Town. She's also served as an Assistant Principal Athletic Director in that school system plus one other school system. And she actually taught with us eight years at the Reesburg Middle School, so she's actually returning to RSU 22. I'm recommending a two-year contract, 2017-2019, with next year's salary established at $90,500. My recommendation for your endorsement, Weatherby Elementary Principal is Jennifer Seer.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, where is Jennifer? I should read it. First of all, Reesburg Middle School, Dawn Rue. I also want to make, express appreciation for Jane, Jane was on interview committee for Jennifer Seer. Dawn Rue, Principal, Reesburg Middle School. Dawn currently serves as a principal, as a principal at RSU 19, which is Newport, where she's been for 13 years. You can see her teaching experience in our neighboring district, RSU 3 Unity, also as Dean of Students in RSU 20. I recommend a two-year contract, 2017-2019, next year's salary at $93,700. My recommendation for your endorsement, Principal of Reesburg Middle School, Dawn Rue. So moved. Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Great.
Thank you, Dawn. Congratulations. Fred Lauer, Handan Academy Assistant Principal Athletic Administrator. As we know, Mr. Visson is also, this is his last call. Mr. Visson is moving on to the Maine Principal Association in a couple of weeks. Fred is not with us this evening because he's in South Carolina where his daughter is going to be going to Clemson this year, so, but you will meet him at the next board meeting. I'm recommending Fred Lauer for two-year contract, 2017-19, salary for 2017-2018 is $80,000. We had a very active committee that actually emailed facilitated along with Mr. Raymond and others on that committee as well. So my recommendation is our Assistant Principal Athletic Administrator at Handan Academy, Fred Lauer.
Motion? Okay.
Second.
Rob. Rob and Jane.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any?
Okay, so we hope that Fred's having a productive time in South Carolina. Now we move to the teaching nominations. Continuing on the same agenda notes, Philip Bergen, grade five teacher at Weatherby School. You can see Philip has a long list of responsibilities in teaching internationally, actually. Currently, he is then in the Dexter School District, you can see East Corinth as well, and a number of years' experience. So with that long tenure, his salary per the collective bargaining contract will be $56,588. Grade five teacher, Weatherby Elementary, Philip Bergen. So moved. Second.
Great, any questions? All those in favor? Oh, Tony?
Will he be continuing the Burnt Island tradition for the fifth grade class?
Well, Philip, where is he? I saw him earlier tonight. Philip, will you be continuing the tradition of the Burnt Island?
You better get him squared away from school in the morning.
Maybe you should ask the principal, Miss, after.
That's a loaded question, isn't it?
I'd say it's probably a pretty rich tradition, so I would guess yes. It should be a yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Any? Okay, good.
Congratulations, Philip.
Welcome.
Now we go to the McGrath Elementary School, grade one, Audra Leland. You can see Audra's background there, nine years teaching kindergarten at the Enfield Station School, grade two, and K1 combination. Her salary per contract, $40,693. Grade one teacher at McGrath, Audra Leland. So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, where's Audra? Congratulations, stand up, Audra. Okay, now if you go to your adjusted agenda notes, in your blue packets, we have three more. The first is Elizabeth Sturgeon, grade three at the Leroy Smith School. Two years, grade four teacher in Orington across the river. Elizabeth's salary, $34,150. My recommendation for your endorsement, grade three teacher, Elizabeth Sturgeon at the Smith Elementary School.
Great, I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Back to the Weatherby Elementary School, grade five, Samantha Anderson. Has been an ed tech at the Weatherby Elementary School. You can see grade four teacher up in Lincoln for two years. Samantha's salary, $34,150. My recommendation for your endorsement, Samantha Anderson, grade five teacher at Weatherby School. So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, Samantha. Jill Stere, grade three, Weatherby Elementary School. Master's degree, University of Maine, Florida State. Twelve years, special education teacher in SAD 28, Camden Rockport. She's been in administration as an assistant director, educational supervisor in the HEP program, and also been a special education teacher up in 25, which is the Catawba area. So with that extensive experience and number of years, you can see, her salary is $66,165. Jill Stere, grade three teacher at Weatherby Elementary School. So moved. Second.
Okay, Rob. Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, I saw Jill earlier, where is she? Okay, thank you for those endorsements. That's it, no transfers thing, so. Oh, thank you, thank you. Coaches. You have a list for Mr. Visson, coaches for the fall and winter. One of these actually we've already done, but we'll take them, normally it's your approval, we'll take them as a slate. I'd ask for your recommendation that Mr. Visson has advanced for our coaches, as you can see in exhibit in your mailing on Friday. Make a motion, we accept him as a slate. Second.
Mike, did I, can I assume all they, they all applied? They went through that process?
Yes. Good question. Because as a reminder, we open all the positions in the springtime. That's a new policy we started a couple of years ago.
Great, any other questions? Great, all those in favor?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Visson. Okay, now we go to the student test report and John's last meeting, he will read our statement, Mr. Coach.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. We believe that our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And we believe that our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, John. At this time, we're going to recognize nine retirees in our school district. And I did the calculation today. These nine people have put in a total of 242 years in our school district. 242 years. And the first one is the lady who was up earlier, Sharon, if you'd come right up, Sharon Zolfer. Sharon had 13 years. Sharon also had 10 years as our drama coach, directing approximately 20 plays. You were, have presented numerous workshops. You're native Northern Ireland where you also taught for a number of years. Is that correct? Thank you very much for your tenure, we appreciate it very much. Any other comments you have, Sharon?
I don't even know, I mean, I'd just like to say that I've really enjoyed teaching at Handan Academy. It's been an honor to serve on the faculty and to be a part of the community and to teach all the students. And I've been able to share my own passion for theater and also my love for English. And as I said at our end of year party, I'm really going to miss hearing the words of great writers come out of the mouths of our students, like Shakespeare and Nynaece Hughes and Homer. And it was wonderful to share those with them and see them get excited about it. So, thank you very much. It's been an honor to be here.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next on my list is Marie Caldwell. Marie? No, I'd like to acknowledge her. Marie will have a nice, the other people, Sharon, if you'd stayed longer, you'd have a nice clock. So these people are beginning a clock, which is really nice. Marie Caldwell is actually an Educational Technician III here in Handan Academy. She's been responsible for the virtual high school and coordinating that with faculty. She's served 22 years, so I'm sure that she received the clock and acknowledgement of her dedication. I don't think Sue Oberholzer is here either. Some of these people are shy or they probably have other engagements. Sue Oberholzer, if you are at the elementary level, she's a technology person that is among various schools. She's been in our district for 24 years. Did I see Gail? No, Gail's not here either. Okay, so Gail is a specialized teacher, most recently at Reesburg Middle School. She's a teacher in the light school program. She also taught at McGrath, Weatherby, and as I noted earlier, Reesburg as well. And Gail's been with us for 29 years. Steve Douglas, I see on that, Mr. Douglas, you can come right up, sir. Get on, have this correct, and now, Mr. Douglas, you correct me. He's been with us for 30 years. 30 years. Steve has taught fifth grade at Smith and most recently at Wagner. Prior to that, I learned that you taught in Littleton and Scarborough before coming to Windham in 1986. So I would thank you and the behalf of the board, Steve, for 30 years of service to our district. Any comments, Mr. Douglas?
No, I think after 30 years, you've heard it all.
Sharon Rogliff, is Sharon with us? Oh, that's too bad, I usually have a nice conversation with Sharon and she can keep me on my toes. Sharon is a colleague of Mr. Douglas, grade five teacher at the Wagner School. Many of you probably know her. She's been with us for 33 years, Sharon Rogliff. Before she came to our school district, this is a point of interest, she taught up in Lincoln. And her husband Rudy and has four children, all graduates of Handan Academy. So we appreciate Sharon for 33 years of service to our school district. Al Barton, do you like to see Al?
He didn't come out.
He couldn't come?
No.
Al's been, most recently, at Wagner Middle School. He taught at Smith and Wagner. If you don't know, we opened Wagner in 1992, he was there when we opened the school. He also has been the athletic director and also coached soccer for many years here at Handan Academy and also Wagner Middle School. Mr. Barton's retiring after 37 years of service to our children. The next lady I know is not here, she had another engagement, and that is Chris Greener, our Director of Food Service. She's been with us for 30 years and been our director for those long years, and has done a very nice job in that program because as the board often talks from the fiscal perspective, when you have a, when you have a food service program that's self-sufficient as an admirable goal, even though we put some money in that this year, you remember, up until this point, that has been self-sufficient. Okay, Mr. Janess, come right up, I have a clock for you, sir. So Emil's been with us, as I mentioned at his retirement the other day, that Emil and I were engaged in March of 1993, married in April 93. He's been here 24 years. Emil and I are the longest-serving superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of the State of Maine as a point of interest. Emil is originally from Lewiston and also, I was in the military for a number of years. Emil was the business manager up in SAD 67, Lincoln, how many years, Emil?
Nine years.
Nine years, so nine plus 20 plus, 33 years really as an Assistant Superintendent, because a business manager is an Assistant Superintendent, so 33 years. 24 in our district. If you're not aware, Emil was actually named the Assistant Superintendent of the Year last year, 2016. Here's a good trivia question, who was Maine's first ever Assistant Superintendent of the Year?
Emil Dinnis.
Good, Emil Dinnis. And also received the Educational Leadership Award in 2006. He tries to play golf, it says here. And he is also, he and his wife, Becky, are the grandparents of a new daughter. So Emil, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Nice work.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Douglas? Yeah, a couple things. As you know, we're recognized as the number one place in the state of Maine for our students and you should cherish that. That's because we have hard-working faculty and staff, they deserve that honor. The people that work in this district work very hard, they're dedicated, and they're very passionate, and so kudos to them, and that's why we are where we are. And I do want to thank my wife, Becky, she's in the back row right here.
Hi, Becky.
Becky, how you doing? My second wife, Martha Harris. Who served, who served in the board member for 20?
One.
Thank you very much. Good luck, you have a great school system here. You are very fortunate in that, again, the faculty and staff deserve a lot of credit here and so do you. And Rick, thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve and it's been, it's been a good gig. Thank you.
Again, a sincere thank you to all the people we recognize, and as Emil mentioned, the core of a school system is the faculty and staff, working with our children every single day. And that's the biggest blessing we can have because that's what really allows our children to succeed, the 2,400 of them. Thank you again to those people for a nice long tenure. Okay, now we have another person we'd like to recognize that actually spoke about this award. Where did she, I see her as?
She's behind.
Michelle. Michelle.
Oh, we're saying her name wrong.
So Michelle, would you, for the benefit of the board and the audience, just remind us of the recognition that you have received and what you're going to be doing over the next few months?
Yes, okay, so I have received a, I'm one of 48 people in the country who is a Global Learning Fellowship member, fellow, I guess that makes me, for, through the NEA. And what they have each year is a cohort of teachers who learn about how to bring 21st century education and into their classrooms and also to teach from a more global perspective, which is awesome because I teach this class called Modern Global Perspectives. So, that's really fabulous and it fits nicely. Living in, one of the things I told the NEA in my application was living in the second whitest state in the country. The first whitest is Vermont. Living in the second whitest state, it's, it takes an extra amount of energy to bring a globalized education. And I work really hard to do that, but I'm always looking for additional opportunities, additional ways for that to happen. So, starting this fall, I will be engaging in some online learning modules, which will help bring lessons back to my classroom. I'll be going to a conference in Washington DC for Columbus Day weekend in the fall. And then the whole fellowship culminates next summer in a nine-day trip to South Africa. Yeah, so I'm super excited. I don't know the exact dates of that yet, but that's where I'll be headed, I can't wait. They keep showing, they keep sending us emails with these tantalizing pictures of South Africa, and that's 13 months away. And I don't think I can handle the pictures any longer, it's like too exciting. So I'm really honored to be part of that. And so I can't wait to bring more back and tell you more. I only have the basic framework at this point, but I'll know a lot more soon, I hope.
Congratulations, maybe.
Thanks.
So maybe a update quarterly or something like that?
Yeah, for sure. How about after I come back from Washington DC in October? Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we're in the part of the adjustment of the agenda, as Karen mentioned earlier, I would anticipate the executive session, the key word there is anticipate, probably about 40 to 45 minutes, so if people want to stay around for the budget, we'll be back out probably about quarter after eight, twenty after eight. So at this time, if you reference your agenda notes, we need to make a motion between the executive session to discuss a first, no matter, one MRSA or vice versa. Got to read a motion, a motion had to be read by the, by the board. I recommend an executive session to discuss personal benefits, one MRSA, four, five, six, eight.
Okay, questions of board, members? Any questions? No questions. Committee reports. Finance committee?
We have something in here, but I just have your chart.
Do you want me to come back to?
Yeah.
Budget committee, we have budget later on in the agenda, so I will ask that we table that. Athletic committee, cut that, Matt?
I'm not sure.
Building committee?
No.
Negoti, no. Education committee?
We did not make this.
Policy committee, do you have anything other than policies later on in the agenda?
No.
UTC.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
No, can you review?
What's that?
Can you review?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Oh, no, don't report.
Well, anything on the ad hoc? Okay, so policies for consideration, John?
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody sees that this, this is in their packet, if they have any questions, I'm more than happy to, if you have any questions on that, budget warrant article.
Please add that to the minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And so John, policy?
So we have three policies for first reading and regulation. The first one, reporting child abuse and neglect, JLF. It's really because the laws changed, but also our policy was much shorter than this and the legal counsel wrote this for us.
Yes, they did.
I just thought it was so well-written.
I can't take credit for that. I have due credit where credit is due.
It's Weatherby.
It was very well-written. Are we just going to do, can I do, do a slate per approval on these or?
We probably should do them one.
Okay.
So you're recommending a motion to pass policy JLF, reporting child abuse and neglect. Can I have a motion?
Sorry.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? First reading? Any opposed? Okay.
Let's see, second one is IJJ instructional library materials. The only thing that's changed on that is adding materials and, or textbooks in there.
Yeah, that's, well, I think it's good to point out that IJJ is getting deleted.
That's correct.
And IJL is replacing IJJ with.
Her policy was 35 years old.
So, that's right, so the IJJ is going away completely.
No, the, the IJJ that we have was deleted.
Yes.
IJL changed to IJJ to replace IJJ.
That's what I was confused about.
And we added materials.
That's right.
And textbooks.
Thank you.
Took me a second.
I'm just glad we're having this conversation because it took me three board meetings to know what you guys are talking about, the early preparations.
Yes, we're going to miss John a little.
I don't think we did that.
I know, I was waiting for John.
He's a math guy, he said we shouldn't use numbers, not alpha, so I'm with him. No, no.
So your recommendations.
Alphabet, room, and numbers. Recommendation is for approval, first reading of this policy, IJJ.
Well, I moved and Tony seconded. Any discussion for that? I have one question, and that is that it says approval is, gosh, I just lost my place, superintendent, false superintendent. Final decision on purchase, show works with the superintendent. Do you, is that, is that, do we want it for designee? Or is that something that you want?
That should be a good, that's, designee should be added.
That's a good suggestion, note cut for, note cut for second reading, yes, thank you. Thank you.
So with that, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Next one is policy DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. And the biggest change here, if I'm correct, is on paragraph three.
Yes, that's correct.
Finance committee will review monthly financial statements, DIR, and the finance committee chair will report quarterly the financial conditions of the school system. The only thing that I thought we were going to add in there is that the finance committee chair would be, I thought we were going to put in there, the word board, that they report the quarterly statements to the board. I don't know if that's necessary, but I thought we discussed that.
Was that in the regulation or was that in the policy? Because I.
I thought it was in, in the policy itself.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I'll make that note so we can talk about that for preparation for second reading.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't think there's any major changes. Looking at that last one. Yeah, so, so I recommend approval of this policy.
So moved.
Our first reading.
Our first reading.
Any discussion? I have one. It's not necessarily a change, but I would love our district to explore how we might be able to use a, a system, electronic system, to work through this. There are such things that exist, I believe, but I don't know if they're leaving that when it worked for a school department and still meets such state statutes, you know, regulations. But, you know, to, rather than scanning all these documents and emailing them to somebody and doing electronic signature, if, for these rare occurrences, it would sure be nice if we could just, it might make more people want to be on finance committee.
We had a pretty long conversation about the electronic signatures, we had one of the attorneys on the phone.
That's actually in the next, in regulation or?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Mm-hmm. I guess while we're in discussion, one of the thoughts I had to do in one of our conversations at budget is that, you know, Keith and his group having the, the two-page summary of budget by providing the finance committee report with that as a attachment is in effect, providing that information to the board. Now, sometimes those minutes aren't prepared already at every subsequent meeting, but basically they're, they're ultimately written in the record at the board level, so we are all still receiving that, but not, you know, specifically on the dime at every time. The two-page document that was prepared, I think, is, as you do for most nonprofit boards or corporate for that matter, will provide a, you know, a budget update, and I think that's a fairly simplified document that just gives you a dashboard, maybe that's a better term for it, is that it is a financial dashboard for the overall health. Obviously, July, August, September, it's not going to be the exciting launch changes it does during the regular school year, but.
Yeah, I just want to point out that when we do review that, that warrant article, you know, this paper that I showed a second ago, that's, that's something that, when we sign warrants twice a week, twice a, twice a week, that's something that we see at the end of everyone about warrants is a paper just like this, that we see and we have the opportunity to review it, ask questions about it, write filings.
Yes. And I'm just referring back to the broaders.
And I'm just referring back to the broader sense of, you know, for the, I mean, over half the people who have attended budget meetings or finance at various times, at any given times, I think just about everyone on the board has been, just as a matter of, of putting it to record if we see fit. It's a way to have it entered in the record, if you will.
So we were doing discussion on that motion, and I apologize because my comments were the next policy. I'm gonna fly to the south. Do I count the gun?
Are we not?
So all those in favor of the approval of first reading of DI? And any opposed to that? Great, thank you.
So the next one's regulation to support policy BDCB. And I'm gonna highlight, I guess, the one we had discussion on a lot, Karen alluded to, is number four, five, and six, really. From time to time, having, being able to do electronic signature rather than have somebody come in. And then, of course, payroll, we have to pay people, so that would be allowed. And then emergencies. Emo gave a great example. If there's a bus full of kids and they need bottles of water or need money for the, the trip or whatever, that's an emergency that he considers and he cuts a check down without approval right then of, of the finance committee. But those will all be approved and signed once the next time the finance committee needs. Anybody want to add to that? So I'm looking for approval, I guess, first reading of this policy, or regulation, actually.
We just have to go through two, two readings?
Yes.
Any other discussion or questions, if you heard me? Great, all those in favor? And any opposed? And thank you, the policy committee, those are important policies to both add and review and update. So I appreciate your work on that. Next, we're going to just move into an update on the budget, school budget for fiscal year eighteen. I wanted to kind of outline the policy and then, or the process, and then I'm gonna invite Rob to add anything else that he'd like to say about that. We did have a group of us that met on Monday, a small group of us, to talk about what we are legally required to do in terms of timelines and process, and, and also the impact of not having a budget, and how we are to manage our district moving forward until we have an approved budget, because it does have a fiscal impact on us that probably people may not understand. So we have to hold another budget meeting ten to forty-five days after June thirteenth. So as early as June twenty-third and as late as July eighteen, uh, twenty-eighth. The budget validation referendum must be within thirty days after the budget meeting. And the budget meeting warrant must be posted at least seven days prior to the meeting date. The budget validation referendum warrants must be delivered to the towns at least fourteen days prior to the referendum date. So until a final budget is approved, the RSU, RSU's interim budget is the budget that was approved at the June eighth budget meeting. That being said, it would not be prudent to spend in accordance with that budget because the final budget may be lower. So it's arbitrary in many ways. If one of the towns needs to commit taxes before a final budget is adopted, we may have to make assessments, although that is, that is not where we want to head. And we're hoping that the young towns will work with us on that. Other things to keep in mind. Articles sixteen through nineteen, which is regarding grant funds, adult education, and capital reserve, are, we're not subject to ratification of yesterday's referendum, or referendum, and therefore they have the necessary approval of the voters, and these articles do not need to be on the warrant for the next budget meeting. Article twenty, the budget committee will discuss that and determine if we want that to move forward for ratification or not. Who knows? We might be lucky and the state might avoid a shutdown, and we might know what we are going to get in just two weeks' time. So article twenty may not be necessary. So a lot of that is up in the air, but we will know more before we have the budget referendum. So that's to be discussed. So with that said, right now, Emo has, has done some numbers for us. We know that it's about, it costs what, the district about five thousand dollars each time we do a budget referendum?
Five to six.
Five to six thousand. So we had the one in June, so we have one in July that we'll be paying. So this is about a ten thousand dollar investment, and hopefully, we're hopeful that we can have a budget passed and only have to do this twice. We also know that for one month, it costs about one point one to one point two million, is that correct?
For payroll.
For payroll. We know we have one point four million cash on hand. So right now, for the month of July, we're operating the budget with those unallocated funds so we can avoid borrowing money.
From the fund balance.
And from the fund balance, yes. So I just want to make people understand that they, they may think that there's a budget. And there is a budget, but that doesn't mean we have the cash on hand. We, we don't have state funds coming in yet. We don't have assurances yet that that's happening.
We have an expenditure budget. We don't have a road.
So we are having to use that, that balance that we have in order to pay our contractual obligations to our teaching faculty and to the other staff on contract. So we are very mindful of that. We are starting the initial process of trying to explore how much a loan would cost so that if our budget doesn't pass at the end of July, we will have to borrow to get us through August. So we are exploring that option so we have that ready to go if it doesn't pass. And that means we, we borrow, we pay interest, interest on that loan as well. So it, it has a fiscal impact as well to our district. And I think this is a good example of why we have an unallocated fund balance. It's because of times like these, because if we didn't have an unallocated funds, which is unfortunately what some people refer to as a slush fund, which is completely and utterly inappropriate and inaccurate. If we didn't have those funds on hand, we would be going out for a loan already. And that would cost all of us money. So this is a great example, I think, and a lesson learned for the board and hopefully for all of us who have an invested interest in the education of our students. So with that, Rob, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just a few thoughts. One, I, I guess at the next budget meeting, I, I hope that the state has done their job and, and tell us what they'll be funding home schools. We can actually plug in a number that allows us to, offers two things. One, which is to move forward with a budget that is, is positive and well crafted, but also returns funds back to the taxpayers. And I think that was a message that was heard loud and clear. Seventy votes made the difference between the passage of this budget. I hope that people show up and hear and ask questions. We're gonna try to do more listening at this next one, because I think the amount of misinformation that's out there passing around allowed at least seventy people more than those that were informed, perhaps to make the choice that wasn't fully informed. And I think we also need to do a job for those that do support the school, who support the district, do understand the budget, and simply chose to go to a barbecue or not show up for the budget, because it always passes. At least it hasn't in twenty years. And I'm looking over here at someone who remembers at least twenty years ago, maybe when the last time it didn't. So under my tenure as budget chair, here we go again. But I think getting the word out, we've forgotten that we need to get the word out to those that do understand, that do support, that it is important for them to get out and vote. That's the whole purpose of having a district-wide budget. So again, show up, ask questions. We will answer them. The time to do it is in a budget meeting where we have all the resources there to answer the questions. I think somebody accurately pointed out on behalf of Heath and his, his committee and ours, some cases there were two people, some cases there were three. Usually the same people, usually the people have gone to five or six or seven out of, out of the eight consecutive meetings and are asking the same questions. So I think it's not, there's needing to be answered.
So just to remind you, and if you haven't, weren't here at the beginning of tonight's meeting, we do have a meeting scheduled for next week, Thursday at seven PM. It will be here. It's a budget committee meeting. The intent of that meeting is simply to hear feedback from the community. We'd like it to be, you know, a collaborative discussion where we might be able to ask some questions, maybe clarify some misunderstandings about some of the decision-making that led up to the initial budget. But it's certainly something we come in with an open mind and, and hopes that we can build something that the majority of our citizens can support. Our timeline is to bring the budget to the board on July twelfth for hopefully approval. Then to have our, district budget meeting, thank you, on July twenty-fifth, and then vote on August first. So if we do not pass the budget August first, we have process in place to immediately take out a loan so that we can make payroll. We have two pay, paychecks, two pay periods for the month of August. We have made a commitment, I think, after talking on Monday, that we will support some purchases leading to help our teacher, teaching faculty leading into September.
Out of this year's budget.
Out of this year's budget. If our budget doesn't pass August first, if this isn't a scare tactic, it's just a reality, we might be in a situation there in order to set our teachers up for, for things beyond September, where we're gonna be struggling and have some difficult conversation as a board and as, as community. So, but we have made that commitment to, to, to do the purchasing for September for beginning of school year. And then that's because we care and we understand what we're here for, and we want to set the stage for our students to succeed. Okay?
Just so you know, Karen, just, we've only sought out the opinion of one bank. We can borrow a million dollars for a month and it costs about fourteen hundred dollars.
I'll sleep with you.
I'll sleep with you, thank you. So that's just any care. If we had to go that route, you can see the landscape associated with that, but hopefully we don't have to do that. You might have heard today where the legislature did give themselves five more days for, for the termination of their session. So I, I do have some optimism that the budget will be adopted by the legislature. Hopefully, when we meet next Thursday, Rob.
Well, Karen, one point two, you mentioned one point four million unallocated fund. Had the vote passed, five hundred forty thousand dollars of that would have been used to lower the local cost to put it down below three percent to nine hundred thousand. So if we do go a month and if we do spend that on payroll, it does open up that conversation again as well. So I mean, this is why this, this, this timing of this domino effect of the delay. And again, I go back to the state. I don't blame the voters. There's a lot of misinformation out there that they made their decisions on. But somebody that did have the ability to do their job was the legislators in Augusta to, to basically admit to what we expect them to do at, at a certain time. And they didn't need the calendar time. It really has caused this whole chain of events to went whole.
I just want to point out real quick that the, the additional cost of holding our district budget meetings, referendums, and the cost of, if we had to borrow any money, interest costs, legal costs, or often come out of system administrations.
Great, we'll talk about it at the next budget meeting. We will actually have to make an adjustment to system administration, which is, includes the board and costs such as this, legal fees, et cetera, or basically pay the ballot clerks to come out a second time. They were covered by the last one, at least some of them were, because it was a townwide election and they were there anyway. But this will be a special school budget-only election. So we will probably be adding, we'll have to come up with a map, I guess, somewhere in the ten thousand dollar range. We'll have to add the system admin to cover the board line item that will cover that kind of expense. So again, it's going to increase the budget. Delaying the, the budget will increase the budget.
But that will all be discussed in detail on Thursday. So I'd definitely invite you to come, Scott.
One quick question. The, you mentioned it costs a number of dollars to, to run an election, and I've been asked by a lot of people how we're gonna get the word on the budget, because we had a link twenty-two last time that we could put all the warrant articles in.
Can I do that again?
We're gonna have to do another one.
We'll have about, we'll have about mailing.
But that's, but that's a factor.
Part of the cost.
Okay.
In nineteen ninety-eight, that was our strategy. We had a, we had about mailing, not the link twenty-two, but about mailing with all the appropriate information.
And I've had requests already for absentee balance for those that are away and just can't do that but want to support the budget. So that's something we'll probably want to include in the about mailing as well.
So I think that.
That is a timing element. You know, it just happens very quickly after the, the budget meeting. You know, get it out there in a kind of sequence, if you're online here, and I think things are gonna move rather quickly in the middle of summer.
So I want to make sure that people understand Thursday is the day for questions and comments. We only have fourteen minutes, I want to be.
I just wanted, I didn't hear yet a location for Thursday.
It will be here.
Okay, thank you.
It will be here. Yeah, absolutely.
Can I, can I just ask quickly, how, how are people gonna know? Because I couldn't agree more. It's the same people, and chances are, if people don't know, it's gonna be the same people here next Thursday. How are we even gonna let people know on a grand scale?
Good question. And I think that it's something that we have, don't have an answer for you yet. We don't have a strategy, but I think one great thing we need to do is the marquee. But in addition to that, there will be efforts made. Any help you can provide would be more than welcome.
Your question's a good one. How, how do you get people to attend that have questions to come and actually ask questions?
Right.
That's all we're asking for.
That's, that's very good.
Let me make a, let me make a comment to the board and actually seek your approval. Is one strategy we have talked about is using our alert system. When we have the alert system in the morning to close schools, we can push that out just like that to thousands of voters.
Everybody knows the system.
So just know that when we push that out, we're not advocating a vote. We're informing the people, but Karen just asked us. We have the meeting on the twenty-ninth, here's the agenda. So if you, if you see the alert system used, let the record know that that's gonna be processed, we're going to embark upon.
I make a motion, we authorize the use of the alert system to notify.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Is the agenda gonna be?
Well, that's probably good to put that in motion.
You wanna put that in? Is there any discussion about using the alert system for that?
Is, I, I don't remember when I signed up to the alert system. It's an opt-in, so are you opting in for something in particular, like only emergencies or not?
You're up for any notification, so you have text, email, phone call.
Can we maybe limit it to an email?
Let me check the people that run that.
Just because Facebook, we get complaints all the time saying, we don't wanna.
I mean.
I think we should have to think about it. Some people do have to pay for that. I think we need to.
Okay, okay.
Make the higher road.
I would rather have people come play about.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Please also put it on the sign-out front.
Yes, we will.
Facebook page, website.
Okay, so we didn't have an official, official vote on that. So any other questions about the alert system before we vote? Okay, all those in favor? Reflections in the minutes.
Maybe mass.
And it's just a communicate date.
That's correct.
And time, and place.
Date, time, and, and DJ.
Yes. Good. So I'd like to move on because we do not have much time for new business.
Yes, this is the time of year where I'm asking for your approval to nominate teachers. You have three categories. First year, just so you know, a teacher on probationary status for three years. So they move from first to second probationary, second to third. And a very important move for teachers is third to what they call continuing contract. Continuing contract by law is a two-year contract. So we need to have your endorsement. These people have been evaluated by the building administrators, principals, recommended to me. At this time, I'm asking for your endorsement of the slate of teachers on the first year probationary to second year probationary, second probationary to third year probationary, and third year probationary to continuing contract.
So. As a slate.
As a slate.
Any discussion, questions about that? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention. Amanda abstention.
The next item, and that's, I, I put a recommendation to approve this, but doesn't require your approval tonight, and that's the VZ contract. Bottom line, this is very simple. This allow, this is asking for the continuation, another year for the business part of the VZ contract, administrative services, which would only include the administrative assistant in my office, because as you know, the superintendent in VZ now is, is Mr. Seer in technology services. Please note, to accentuate, that even with the expenses that we pay people, that VZ pays people, that we have a net revenue coming into RSU twenty-two and twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Or said differently and more succinctly, if we choose not to embark upon this, which is the board's prerogative, we lose twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars of revenue.
So the plan on that one is to bring it back in July?
We can bring it back in the July twelfth meeting. If you have any questions, please send me an email or comment.
If we're going to act on the VZ contract, I'm, I'm thinking of Scott Cuddy and his famous question last year. Could you also send us the con, copy of the contract?
I can.
When did that contract do, sign?
Well, VZ already approved it. The, in the perfect world, we should sign it by July one, but July twelfth would be doable, since they now have their own superintendent. So July twelfth would be the drop date, VZ. But I'll send you the contract. Well, you could, you could.
I think that people wanna see the actual contract.
I am, I'm utterly supportive of what we've done with V C, but if I'm gonna vote on a contract, I wanna be able to see.
Valid point. Valid point.
Indeed, yeah, that's, well, yeah, we had a recent update about that, there are some people who haven't, haven't seen one of these contracts.
You'll have, the next item while Karen, you will talk, the next item is, uh, actually gonna ask Amanda to facilitate that. And that is, is her great idea to reinvigorate the community relations.
It, it was not my idea, it was, it was a, a big idea that we've been talking about for a long time. Um, the trend over the past three years that we keep hearing is communication, communication, communication. Um, and I, I always hear her talk about, uh, education in the twenty-first century, yet I think as a board, myself included, we're communicating not in the twenty-first century. So, um, however, there are other, uh, groups of people and individuals who are choosing to use, um, more, um, different forms of, uh, communication. So, um, I think, I would love to propose, I don't know if it's a motion, um, to form a communication committee. Um, I would love for that communication committee to come up with a long-term communication plan. But I think that we have some really immediate needs, um, that need to happen now outside of that communication plan. There's a lot of misinformation going around, um, and unfortunately, we haven't gotten the word out with the actual, um, information that needs to go out.
And it's actually in our policy for standing committees, so I don't believe there is a need to make a motion, we just need to reestablish.
Send it to the policy committee, that's, that's a great point.
It is in the policy.
So I would nominate Amanda to chair that.
Well, that's not how it works, we need to follow the policy of committee chairs. Um, however, I would like, um, I know Amanda has expressed interest, so maybe if we'd asked for volunteers initially, since we're kind of forming this, re-establishing this out of order. Do you agree with that and maybe ask for volunteers, I know there's several people who have expressed interest.
To join the committee?
To join the committee and then that committee will then discuss who will be chair, we think that.
Well, and I would like to suggest that although, uh, taking on another committee assignment may not be apropos, that the chairs of the other committees are considered, uh. Quite sufficient, basically, they, they need to, we need to dial in because there, there were, depending on the topical discussion, it will, it require, uh, communication. And it'd be better rather than having it multiple meetings, just to have those representatives have communication.
I agree, I, I think just like we've been doing with policy committee when we're reviewing the finance policies, Heath has been.
Absolutely.
I think that works very well, so I would envision it'd be the same thing with communications.
Some sort of communication between, you know, as far as, out of what we have for ten meetings.
Right, absolutely, great. Set meeting dates, do we have any meeting dates that we need to set?
Well, just to remind, I'll send this out tomorrow, so our next board meeting will be July twelfth, not, July twelfth. Next week at, uh, seven o'clock here is the budget slash finance committee. And then July twenty-five will be the district budget meeting and August one will be the referendum, you'll have these tomorrow in your email. So our next meeting will be next Thursday, twenty-ninth, budget slash finance, uh, combination committee, seven o'clock.
So, um, now, we have the option of either extending tonight's meeting with a formal vote, and we do have an executive session on the agenda.
Or you can, or you can roll it over to July twelfth.
And do the executive session on July twelfth.
Can we do that because the superintendent, if you started outside of our policy, so. Then there's a motion, we extend the meeting so that we can cover the executive session on Tuesday and.
Look at you.
I am impressed by you. Um, so we've got a motion in a second and, um, all those in favor of extending tonight's meeting? And any opposed? Which one, you lose, um, so now we need a motion to go into an executive session, can somebody read the, um, motion as well?
I make a motion, we go into executive session, discuss the evaluation of superintendents, school program, M R S A, four oh five six nine.
All those in favor? Thank you, thank you folks for coming out tonight and staying with us.